I call a order, this regular meeting and public hearing of the City Council of the City of Nassau Bay, Texas, being held on Monday.
Recording in progress.
That too. Being held on Monday, January the 10th, 2022, at 7:00 PM in the Council Chamber of City Hall, 1800 Space Park Drive, Suite 200, Nassau Bay, Texas. All City Council members are present in the chamber. Our next event is the Pledge Allegiance to the Flags of the United States in Texas. And I'd like to welcome the Park Place Commander here, area number 106, to perform the flag presentation.
Ladies and gentlemen, would you please rise? For nights four march. Ladies and gentlemen, you can lower your sleeve momentarily for the flag talk. Ladies and gentlemen, I direct attention to the flag over left country. It is always displayed in the east of every assembly where it is accorded the position of highest honor. It is constant inspiration to every lover of this country. It demands unswerving loyalty and wholehearted devotion to the principles of which it is Lord's representative. It is a majestic symbol of freedom under constitutional government. Beneath its protecting folds, liberty, equality, and fraternity have become the heritage of every citizen. While the oppressed of many nations have found peace and happiness in the land over which it flows, the flags of mighty empires have come and gone, but the stars and stripes remain. Along of all flags, it expresses the sovereignty of the people which endures when all else passes away, speaking with the voice that has the sanctity of revelation. He who lives under it and is loyal to it is loyal to truth and justice everywhere. So long as it flies, government of the people, by the people, for the people shall not perish for the earth. Would you please resume your salute for the postions. For night four march. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one indivisible. Sir nights carrying swords about face. I'd like to take the opportunity to introduce the sir nights who came out to do the flag presentation. I'll lay on the far left, your far left is Sir Night House Smith, who's a past commander or Park Place Commander, number 106. And in front of me is Sir Night Jay Don Little, who's also a past commander of Park Place Commander, number 106. And I'm also Henry Hughes, past commander of Park Place, number 106. Mayor, if you would like to seat the crowd, I would like to give a short explanation of our organization.
Please do.
Please be seated. Some of you might not be familiar with the Night Summer, you might have seen the funny hats which are called opposed. We are Christian Masonic organizations, which has three principal charities, the Night Temple Eye Foundation, the Holy Land Fogan Ridge Foundation, and the Educational Foundation. The Night, the Eye Foundation is an organization which does research for diseases of eye, the eyes. The Holy Land Fogan Ridge Foundation is a foundation which raises money to send ministers to the Holy Land to actually walk the path that Jesus did. And then the educational program is a program where people who have at least 30 college credits or are going to a trade school can apply for a thousand dollar grant from that foundation. Thank you very much for your attention.
And the mandatory has been here for a long time and provided a valuable service to the community and grateful recognition and appreciation for conducting the pledge of allegiance at the January 10th, 2022 City Council meeting. And witness here of the mayor of the city of Nassau Bay, the Texas signature and the city seal here on this 10th day of January, 2022. We appreciate greatly, very much what you gentlemen gave for us.
Thank you very much for allowing us to be here. Thank you very much. You might see me, recognize me from number one. Anyway, just a short explanation, you might notice I don't carry a sword, I'm not carrying a sword. Well, they don't let me play with sharp objects. No, seriously, my role with the commandery is that of what's called proleg. And I am the spiritual leader of that organization, well, our local commandery. Thank you, given Mayor Waters a counsel for allowing us to come and do the flag presentation for your council.
Hank, if you can remain there for just a moment.
I'm in trouble with the chief.
Mayor and council, if y'all indulge me for just a minute, I'm going to step out of order later on during staff reports. I'm going to report on some of the staff awards from last year. But while Hank Hughes, Henry Hughes is still here, I wanted to, during our December holiday party, our employees were awarded with a number of different awards. And Henry Hank Hughes was recognized for his 40 years of service to the city of Nassau Bay, 37 of those years with the Nassau Bay Police Department. So we wanted to recognize, while Hank is here, wanted to recognize him for his 40 years of service with the police department in the city of Nassau Bay in total. Also have one of our wonderful citizens who wants to remain nameless, wanted to recognize Officer Hank Hughes for his bus run duties that he has provided for the buses for, I don't know how many years now, but a brick has been purchased with Hank's name, Nassau Bay Bus Guardian, Officer Hank Hughes. There's a picture of it right here, and it's been placed out at David Braun Park. So I just wanted to thank you for allowing me to step out of order and recognize Hank for all the services that he provided.
The first is to the Bay Area Houston Ballet. Theater, theater, I'm sorry, excuse me, is for a nice $5,000.
It's $1,000, that's my apologies, mayor.
Well, these are hard times. I'm sorry, but you're worth $5,000. Could you go forward and add your point?
See, it really does say that.
It does. My name is Joey, and I'm the executive director of Bay Area Houston Ballet and Theater, and I'm happily here with the chair of our board, Ms. Pam Koberkrom. And we are very thrilled. And we are very excited. This is our 46th year in the community doing, bringing the arts to this area. We just finished, of course, our Nutcracker, and it was the first time that we had sold out every live, every public performance. And it just proves that COVID couldn't get us down and that the arts are back, and we appreciate this support. As we are thrilled and know that the quality of a community is solely tied between the arts and the, and the community, and this proves that you appreciate it as well as we do. And so we thank you so much for your support. It means the world to us, yes. We have upcoming in April, the first weekend in April, we're doing a salute to the 80s, which is going to be a little contemporary and fun with a local band.
I think most everybody here remembers the 80s.
It's a local band, we haven't signed the contract yet, so I'm not going to release who that is, but it's going to be really, really tied together, a little collaboration with that, and we're excited about that. And then in August, our second, second and third weekend in August, we're going to be doing a musical, An American in Paris, finally, it's going to happen, and we're very excited. Open auditions will be coming up this month, so look for that. If you have any talent, we'd love to have you. Turn around like any one time. But thank you so much, we really appreciate your support.
But here's the real check. I have to look to see what it says. Cross your fingers before you open.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Our next award is to the Clear Creek Environmental. The, and this one says $2,000. So that's what it is. So who's coming forward to receive this?
We've got an army.
We've seen this gentleman forward here at this chair.
First, I want to introduce the two gentlemen with me, and of course, you know Jim Stone and I, but Lloyd Thorne is vice president of CCF, and Mike Stone is president, and they're in their 24th year of cleaning up the creek. And so they're going to focus this year, something they've never done, they're going to focus just on our peninsula issue. And so they'll have at least probably four boats, maybe five. And while we're doing our internal cleanup through parks that Roscoe organizes so well, they'll be hitting the shoreline. And on top of that, the city of Lake City has donated a roll-off for us, for our trash that we pull from the river. No charge, you won't get a bill for that, I don't give paddy's, he's good. So they're amazing cooperation they get, plus they've got a restaurant that's going to feed the volunteers.
Who's coming on that there?
That's the bonds. So these gentlemen do a great job, so I'm going to ask Lloyd or Mike what they want to talk a little bit about, what's going on February the 12th.
Thank you very much. On February 12th, we'll be having a get-together to all volunteers come, and we'd love to be able to clean up as much debris as possible. I have to regress a little bit, this is our 24th year, and I can remember in the 70s and 80s, water skiing in the creek and in the lake and seeing tires, debris and all, and it just, it was disheartening to see the trash that was out there. And then I got with Clear Creek Environmental Foundation, Mike Rex Ward, and found out what a wonderful organization this was, and this was back in 2006 or '07 for me. And it was unbelievable, the thousands of tires, the tons of debris, anything from hot tubs to pieces of piers to refrigerators, furniture, wrecked, we pulled wrecked boats out, some boats, we've actually raised them out of the, out of the lake where they would have been a potential hazard for some boat or hitting them. And so, that's right, we did pull one off, that took three boats, one airboat, two other boats pushing, so anyway, a lot of work there. And it's a labor of love, it's a labor of love for our lake, for our creek, and for our environment. So I invite anybody, if you don't have anything to do that day, we would love to have you out there, good stretching exercises. Meeting at the 270 boat ramp at 8 o'clock.
Lloyd, just a little add-on, a couple of years ago, I was out there mowing a delivering to folks, and I yelled at Lloyd, Lloyd had his airboats over there, so he was working on his airboat, and I saw something around the water, actually weird, because a bunch of volunteers from CCI, I see my rotor in Lake City, and Roy ended up shoving this, it turned out to be a two-man, two-jet ski boat. And so I told Jason about it, and he said, oh, the city uses it for their new firehouse, so that's what, what's your name? Repurpose, there you go.
So anyway, they're joined up with our 26th anniversary of the Clear Creek Cleanup, our Peninsula Cleanup. Roscoe, you want to talk a little bit about it, so we need our volunteers too.
Okay, thanks. Yeah, we always coordinate the Peninsula Cleanup with the Keep Nassau Bay Beautiful Peninsula, which has been doing it for 26 years, I believe. And for the last three years, the Keep Nassau Bay Beautiful has hooked up with them, and for us, you could, we're part of Keep Texas Beautiful, and they kind of request with, under the COVID restrictions, to try to minimize the crowding. So we're going to, like we did last year, have an online sign-up, you can always sign up at the gate. Last year, surprisingly, we had 95 volunteers, the greatest number that we've had in Nassau Bay. So I show up at the Peninsula Gate, but we've also asked or instituted something just off the spur of the moment that I think is helpful. We ask people to park in the parking lot at David Braun Park, because the parking on Harbor Drive is very tight. A lot of people get tired by the time they walk through the parking lot to the Peninsula. So we've had some volunteers in the past offer their golf carts, and we'll do that again, that will transport people from the parking lot to the gate. There we'll have supplies that Keep Texas Beautiful will provide to us, some of the grab sticks. Spark always tells us, and this is for kids that volunteer with Clear Creek, don't wear shorts. We did several first aid cleanups last year on kids that went through the thorny bushes in shorts, that's not advisable, don't come in flip-flops, don't come in shoes that you worry about losing, because you may lose it in the mud. But as was said, I think the, we did not expect a large crowd last year because of COVID, but I think there's so much pent-up energy from everybody staying in, that they came out, we had great weather last year, we hope to have it also this February, come out, stretch your muscles, and then everybody seems to have a great time with it. Maybe we'll all come down and join you for dinner, I mean, let's have a little.
I see some really good potential volunteers in this room. Take a look.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council, and citizens of Nassau Bay, we appreciate, we couldn't do it without y'all.
Thank y'all.
Appreciate your support.
before council. And we're now, it's now 7:17. And if anybody would like to speak, please come forward and do so.
Jonathan Amder, 17th ward. Counsel, it is not too late to do the right thing. There have been some bad decisions, and there have been situations where you have operated with less than openness, and as a result, we have some situations that need to be addressed, starting with the playground issue. I would propose that the right thing to do at this point would be to engage the entire community and have a vote. I'm not referring to the survey that was done, that was not far-reaching enough in substance or population, but engage the entire community that wants to participate and have them vote on three questions. Keep or return? If return, it's understood that the city would take a loss. If keep, majority rules, we move down to the second issue, which would be Braun Park or Ward Park? Majority would rule. If Braun Park, which of the following locations? If Ward Park, which of the following locations? Let the overwhelming plurality decide on this issue. Doing the right thing unfortunately does not mean that there won't be consequences for actions taken up to this point. Concerning the issue of Jason Reynolds, criminal laws were violated, and there are going to be repercussions. For those of you who forget that I don't bluff, you may think I'm bluffing. You know that criminal laws were violated, and I know that, because I have access to documents. I'll give you an example. There was an email correspondence between two mayors of, two, two members of council, excuse me, on November 1st, that implicated five members of council in violation of the Open Meetings Act. I've got a lot more. This is your opportunity to do the right thing and be transparent. If you're not, that's fine, that's your decision. Doing so might help mitigate the repercussions you face. If not, this documentation is going to see the light of day anyway. Third issue. You guys are working public works way too hard, they're working too many hours, they're working too many consecutive days, morale is down, there are members that are invaluable to the city who are looking for jobs elsewhere, we can't afford to lose them. Please fix this. Have a great night.
My name is James Simpson, we live at 18347 Cape Mahalas Lane. My daughter wished to make a statement regarding the playground equipment.
Please allow me to speak today, I'm asking of you to please not consider returning the equipment for the older kids, because first off, when families come to play and they have older kids, and when they see younger kids' equipment, they might not want to play. Second off, when I go to a park and I see equipment for younger kids, I stop going wanting to go, because I got bored. Sure, it was fun the first or fifth time, but afterwards, it stopped being so much fun. So now, if we're getting new equipment, I want equipment for older kids, so that we can make happy memories too, and always want to go to the playground. Thank you.
Save the playground.
Thank you, make sure to sit down right now. Just want to say, although to dig, Greg, I've known you for a long time, and I always appreciate your support, hope and support for veterans, thank you so much. My name is Drew Benson, I'm a resident, I live at 1802 Davenport Lane, directly behind Howard Ward Park. I am a retired practicing attorney, and I mean retired, so don't misunderstand me as fighting anything. I want to talk about Howard Ward Park. I understand that there have been discussions and voting regarding whether a piece of equipment known as Kid Course 1800, judging as playground equipment, should be installed in Howard Ward Park. I'm opposed to such an installation without an in-depth, without in-depth legal research as to whether such an installation can be considered, or could be considered, by some court as a public nuisance that could be subject to financial charges against the city and a public injunction. A public nuisance, all you have to do is open used in Chronicles and read about court cases involving public nuisances, and they go on. Examples of a public nuisance could include interference with Howard Ward Park, the track, alteration of that public track, no public health facilities, no restrooms, which could lead to the creation of a public health concern. Public health concerns are part of this particular legal theory. Simplest of terms to describe a public nuisance is that, public nuisance is something that can cause public arrogance, the public problem, public property, excuse me, I'm on a tiny word. I strongly recommend to the city officers, to the mayor, that the city officers retain the services of a major court law firm, because a public nuisance is a civil lawsuit, although I don't know if it's a criminal action in the state of Texas, I haven't researched that, but to research through a public, through a tort law firm, the case law regarding public nuisance and whether or not a lawsuit over the installation of Kid Course 1800 playground along with public changes that may be incurred in putting that in the market. I thank you all for your time. Public nuisance, write it down, read the news page, and you'll see where litigation's been wrong. My wife and I, sitting right back here, Susan, both know of the installation of Kid Course 1800 in Howard Ward Park. I did, I think, makes sense to you, Mike.
I reached out to each member of council and the mayor to try to get a better understanding of the events that led up to the purchase of the Kids Course 1800 equipment. Based on those conversations, it's my understanding- Based on those conversations, it's my understanding that all members were originally in favor of new playground equipment for David Braun, which is why they all voted in favor of making the original purchase. However, some citizens were left unsatisfied and said that older children of Nassau Bay needed additional equipment, specifically the Kids Course Eighteen Hundred, which is alleged to be more challenging, although it's categorized for the same age group as the already purchased stadium being put into David Braun Park. Again, council voted unanimously to get a bid for the equipment with the intention of installing it in Swan Lagoon Park. However, residents there understandably protested the large piece of equipment being placed so closely to their homes. It's my understanding that Councilman Plu then made a motion to purchase the equipment anyway with the location to be determined. The motion passed for three, with council members raised prior orders voting against purchasing the equipment without a determined location. I was unable to confirm Councilman Waters' vote on that as he is the only member that did not reply to my inquiry at all. I also didn't receive any confirmation from Councilman Plu because he didn't answer any of my questions. He did say in his email that he would answer them here tonight though and that I should call him if I wanted to discuss it. I did, but before I could ask a single question, Councilman Plu accused me of mudslinging and hung up on me. Asking questions is not mudsling, mudsling, it's our right as citizens. I couldn't be mudslinging anyway because by definition that's something that takes place between opponents. I am not anyone's opponent here. I'm your neighbor, I'm a citizen of Nassau Bay. And I will remain a voter in Nassau Bay for the foreseeable future regardless of when your terms man. Much like what happened to the city manager, what's done is done. We can and should still ask questions about what happened in the past so we don't repeat mistakes, but we should look forward to the options we have now. Where are our realistic options for this equipment? It's understandable that like Swan Lagoon or Howard Ward neighbors don't want this equipment so close to their homes. Mr. Amder also expressed concern to me about putting this equipment in an area that continuously floods, knowing that things built below fifteen feet of sea level are uninsurable. I think that also makes sense. Playground equipment is important and giving kids as many options as we can is ideal for all of us. But what if we can't? What if there isn't a good option? We need to consider other ideas. We should also consider working with Game Time to exchange the Kids Course Eighteen Hundred for equipment that is needed now in Swan Lagoon. Or exchanging the equipment for modifications of the David Braun equipment to make it more inclusive and accessible to differently able children. There are always other options. I look forward to hearing what you all have to say tonight and for what it's worth, most of the members I spoke with were very polite and seemed to be working toward a solution as well. Thank you.
I'm Laura Ford at Back Bay Court and I'm wishing I had the courage of a little girl who stood up and spoke earlier. I'm still totally nervous to be up here. But I'm a mom to a nine-year-old little boy who had a dream for our parks. And so when a neighbor called me and she's a grandmother and told me that her five-year-old grandson had outrun all the equipment already and asked me if I'd help get some families involved, we were happy to help with that. My son wrote a letter, how do I address this? My son wrote a letter and he and his friends rode around on bikes and talked to a lot of families to see how they felt about playground equipment. And then more and more families started coming to meetings talking about playground equipment. So much so that at one point, city council said they had received more input on the playgrounds than any other issue besides the apartments. Now that was before Facebook and everything else, so it may change now. But council approved that new playground equipment, including the Kid Course last spring. A lot of families have been happy about it ever since. In fact, last weekend I was at the park playing with a group of kids and a little kid who's sick, couldn't be more than four years old, walked up to me and he said, "We're getting a ninja course." And he was so excited, his dad said he had seen that vote, made his decision and he'd been waiting for it, talking about it ever since. And I didn't want to be the one to tell that kid that it may not happen because suddenly our playgrounds have become political and people are now saying it needs to be returned because it's a duplicate. You just need to look at the two pieces, I see some, some posters that kids made, uh, to see that they're totally different. Um, in fact, they're, they're less similar to than even the pickleball courts. Thank you, Pauline, uh, the pickleball courts and the tennis courts. But you know, when we're talking and comparing one piece of equipment to another, we're missing the whole point. This is about providing more options for our kids so that they want to stay at our parks and they want to be there until the sun goes down. And I think with COVID, if we've learned anything, it's that we want our kids to have more options. So they're not all on top of one piece of equipment at the same time. And I've heard a few people say that they're still opposed, they want to return this equipment right now. And when I hear that, especially at a loss, it just makes no sense whatsoever to me. And it just makes me think either somebody really doesn't want playground equipment and more options for our kids or there's something bigger going on in this community. And I think that's the case. In fact, it's gotten so ugly that my little boy is trending on social media. I'm sorry. And that's not okay. When our playgrounds are being used for political posturing, our kids lose. And so do we because we've become divided over something that should have brought the whole neighborhood together. So I ask you, counsel, to please stick to your decision and don't kill that playground. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Michelle Weller and I live on Saxton Lane in Queens Court. I got involved in the playgrounds because while I was in favor of the equipment, I didn't want it in Howard Ward Park behind my house. So I voted on the equipment. I voted for David Braun Park and most people agreed with me and voted David Braun Park too. Then I hear that a few group of people were ignoring the two votes by city council and were trying to cancel the playground altogether. And I was astonished. I don't have children to bring to the playgrounds anymore, but I really couldn't believe there was a group of people trying to kill the Kid Course ninja equipment that was approved last year, budgeted, paid for, and is already fabricated. So I drove around, I, I went to the park and I started to talk to people. And there was not a single person playing with their kids who said no to the extra playground equipment. They did not think it was a duplicate, as you can clearly see. Only a few people even said they voted, most had never heard of it. Many were too afraid and to upset the parks committee to speak out. Don't we want more, uh, to attract more families to Nassau Bay? What makes kids happy is freedom and playtime, the parents said. So I started to think, hasn't generation lockdown suffered enough? School closures, canceled vacation, postponed dance recitals, ruined choir practice and some graduation ceremonies are gone forever and now we got to go and kill the playground? As one resident said, they can take care of the ducks, dogs, they can feed the ducks, but they can't take care of the kids? Children born during the pandemic have lower IQs because of reduced interactions with other kids. The pandemic has caused a thirty percent increase in obesity. Psychiatric hospital visits are up twenty-four percent amongst children aged five to eleven. The pandemic has affected my friend's children with one being therapy for anxiety, another feeling suicidal because her life was over. And sadly, childhood suicides are up thirty percent overall. I read where a nine-year-old boy left a note saying that he had nothing to look forward to. It seems to me to solve, to solve this nightmare that families need more options for playtime and not less. Is this the legacy we want to leave for our kids? That Nassau Bay was like Old Man Potter banging on the desk, "Oh, they have enough equipment." Well, I'm the one who don't want my legacy to go down like that, so I got to work. I went out and I called, I knocked on doors, I visited playgrounds, I texted my friends and I got a hundred and forty-six names. Uh, ten people told me they didn't want to put their name down because they were afraid they'd get banned from the parks committee. So this was in one week. So if I have to, I will make it my life's mission to make sure that all four thousand people in Nassau Bay know who killed this playground equipment.
I'm Elisa Schultz, Back Bay Court. And I'm speaking from an educator point of view because I've been an educator in CCIC for twenty-nine years. And I don't make it a habit to get politically involved with anything, but this has got my attention. Because for the past two years with COVID, I've seen how it's affected, it's affected my students, I teach fifth graders. And coming to school, the only interaction they've had in the past two years has been online dating with friends. Getting to go to recess, getting to play on recess equipment is huge for them. Getting to see the kids that I babysit and I take care of and go to the parks and getting to interact finally, it is so huge for those, their self-esteem and their emotions. And I've seen students come from not getting to talk to friends for a year to now I get to go outside and play with them. Yes, we have to distance, we have to be safe, but we're still learning how to socialize again. And that's something I've seen a huge decline in, in the past two years. And just by having the equipment that's appropriate for every single age group, it's great to have brand new equipment. It's, it's, it's got a novelty and kids love it for the first four, if you, you know, four or five times, like Hannah just said. But when you get older, you want more challenges. And as a fifth grade teacher, American Ninja Warrior, it's huge. And so when you can give kids something that they're interested in and a challenge to challenge themselves, that's huge. And they're going to meet up and they're going to play with each other and they're going to learn to socialize again. And this is just, it's, to me, it shouldn't be political when we look at something that's for the betterment of our children. So I'm just coming to you as an educator, twenty-nine years in CCIC, just saying what a difference this makes for our children. They have been trapped at home for two years. And even just when we have raining day and or recess, I see their self-esteem go down. I see how they stop interacting and they just want to get on a laptop and not talk. But you take them to a park and you let them play and engage and they don't have to have conversations, they know playground etiquette. It makes such a difference with these kids. So I'm just asking you from an educator point of view, please don't kill this playground idea because it's huge. And we need to reach all ages of kids, whether they're five, ten, twelve, thirteen, it doesn't matter, this is important. Thank you.
Lucy Joanna Sturrock, fifteen oh three Dune Run. I am the mother of a six-year-old daughter and nine and eleven-year-old boys. Um, I first, when I bought my house before I even defended my dissertation, my grandma lived here, my uncle lived here, I wanted to be part of this community. Um, when I bought my house, my neighbors were original owners, empty nesters, a lot of old people in it, right? You guys know what I'm talking about, all the people with kids now have moved into those homes and these homes are becoming vacated, families are moving in. I, you know, I don't have a political agenda, I don't have enough information to pick any kind of sides, but I do care a lot about my kids. So when I looked at the city financials, um, for the past few years, one of the things that really stood out to me is that if you look in the comprehensive annual financial report that they've had for the past couple of years, it does point out that no payment is made or obligation incurred against any appropriation unless the city manager or his designee first certifies that there is sufficient unencumbered balance to meet that obligation. So I trust our city manager that we've had that we don't have a financial issue here. So then what is the problem? When I look at this, to me, this is all about the playground, I really don't know what the bigger, broader issue is for me. When I think about, when you think about the playground, think about that little five-year-old, the kindergarten or the bus stop, that's who you picture playing on these, this playground equipment, right? Smaller kids, there's going to be smaller kids. Think about that five-year-old, it could be your grandchild, your child, just the neighbor kid you see having fun playing on that. I have a six-year-old, she loves to play in Howard Ward, she loves to play David Braun, my in-laws bring her to those parks all the time too. But the problem for me is that I have an eleven-year-old. He's a hundred and fifteen pounds, five foot three, clumsy, immature and likes to play with his friends. I don't let him play on the playground. I don't want him to knock down a little five-year-olds. I have to tell my kid no when I take him to the playground. So this is personal to me, I'm going to defend my children, I brought my mama bear tea tonight. I want more bigger, older playground equipment for my children, for other children. I want those little boys to run around and have fun and let me not be a failure and hurt the smaller children. And I know it says five to twelve, that's not appropriate for my kid when he's having fun. So let's, let kids have an opportunity to play, let them be part of this community too. If you have a battle you want to fight, take it to the polls, not to the playground.
My name is Elaine Simpson, I live at eighteen three four seven Cape Bahamas Lane.
Need to speak up, please?
Um, my name is Elaine Simpson, I live at one eight three four seven Cape Bahamas Lane. And, um, I have two children, um, one nine and one, uh, ten, eleven years old. I want initially want to thank everybody that works for the city. I want to thank Paul, I want to thank all our volunteers, Roscoe. I want to thank all of council members and, um, everybody that came here today. I want to share my story because, um, it has been difficult for me to come back to a meeting here because I was kind of disenchanted. I came, um, about a year ago to the first meeting because of playground equipment. And during that time, I was actually going through chemo. And I have been going through chemo for almost two years, um, because I have breast cancer. And, um, I'm finally through with chemo, but I'm still going through surgeries right now. But, um, uh, playground equipment is important to me because it is an outlet for my children. It's something that my children can fight to on their own. Because there's been times where I can't take my children to the park. It's something that they can fight to and go and it's an outlet for them. It's been times where, especially during COVID, they can go and not be around me when I'm sick. And, um, where they don't have to see, um, you know, the reality of their life. And, um, and it is, I'm not trying to be political, I'm just trying to give them something for them to look forward to and something for them to play and be children. And I just ask for y'all to consider giving them a variety of things for them to do. They love to feed the ducks, they love to just be in this community. And so she asked to come and speak to y'all. And I had really thought about letting her speak because it has been so controversial. I'm really worried about it. And, but I, I let her be, she really wanted to, she wrote out her own speech and everything. And, um, I, I love this community, but I'm also saddened by how, you know, how it's kind of torn our community. Thank you, and I want to thank everybody again.
Good afternoon, everybody, my name is Mary Abraham, I live at eighteen fourteen Antigua Lane. And yes, we are all neighbors. I'm a mom of three kids, although my youngest is now out of college, Alabama, fighting tonight for the national championship. But I'm a neighbor here too. And all of y'all, we're all neighbors. We're just trying to find what's best for our neighborhood, okay? My, um, kitchen window overlooks the basketball court across from Ward Park. The language that I hear in my house from that basketball court is offensive. So that is why I'm against this large apparatus going outside of my windows at Ward Park. I'm not against this apparatus going in Braun Park in a large park facility where a large item goes. It doesn't go outside of our kitchen windows. I can tell you that I have actually had to call the police before. And the offensive language with the N-words and the racial slurs that I hear from that basketball court, you don't want that outside your window and you don't want your ten-year-old children playing with that either. It's offensive. So this needs to be at a larger park facility where there is perhaps more people around and more, I, I don't know what the answer is, but the answer is not to put it outside of our kitchen windows. This is, and, and the location at Ward Park that y'all are looking at putting it is only along Ben Lane, you're not even considering the other side of Ward Park. I'd be fine with that too, just get it away from the houses, don't put it so close to our houses. Our neighbors in Swan Lagoon spoke up and y'all listened right away to them and y'all pulled it and that's not even being considered at all. I, I, but great for them. Please listen to us too, don't put it outside of our kitchen windows. That's where our homes are, that's where we want to just sit and relax. And yes, I want kids to have, uh, playground equipment, I think that's a great idea, we have a large park for that. There should be a place in Braun Park that can handle this, not Ward Park, please.
I'm Boris Berison, I'm a citizen of Nassau Bay since nineteen ninety-five. I live across Howard Ward Park, thus protecting this park is in my best interest, my personal best interest. Ward Park, thus protecting this park is in my best interest, my personal best interest. I'm not here for myself, I'm here for all citizens' interests. Any and all, including playground, which turns out to be a litmus of much bigger problem. The purchase keep course, even if temporarily should go where it was asked for and belongs in a big David Braun Park, please do not ruin Howard Ward Park, please do not even consider it anymore. Leave it peaceful for now and forever. That's what I want. Now, the true problem then is lack of accountability to the citizen from the city council and staff. I've heard others, you've heard others, please hear me, and I address you, and I address citizens of Nassau Bay. Because my dream house is on eighteen five eighteen Upper Bay Road, I could live away from the park. But if you drive by empty lot and ask yourself, why is it empty? I want you to consider for the next hundred seconds this face, okay? This face directly and heartlessly dismissed by all on this podium, ostensibly ostracized by the city manager. I will cry over his level. Now, with no recourse, I can only go to people, but I can't. The reason that I can't is, there's no recourse. And now I was schooled by the greatest volunteer ever lived on Playground Affair, for it, the Playground Affair revealed the mockery of all the deciders and all the positions and all the activities that you guys are in your, chosen for. And I'd like to make sure that you know, elections are not popularity contests. You are accountable, and I want Nassau Bay people deserve the best. Now, not to bore you anymore, I'm just gonna cut the chase, okay? With your permission. The one thing is obvious, the election season is in full swing, boom, with flags and stuff, swords and all that stuff. Now, without any thanks to the whining politicians, the distilled summary of my message is, our city is, got it? Our city is on the my side of the steep bell curve. It is highly likely that its finances too dwindling, while inner circle of our elected officials is absolutely impotent to reverse the course of bankruptcy. Council paid again. Okay, people want the kid course in David Braun Park, just do it there. Aside from community divisive and painful fight for playground purchase, beside bizarre location choices, anyone can see, here are the obvious reasons for all this. Got it?
Uh, my name is Dan Young, I live at the one eight seven three one Martinique, and, um, this is just comments regarding the survey and the vote. Uh, what really struck me about the Howard Ward choice was that there were questions about the location. It would, there were questions about, would it have to be built over a utility, some drainage pipes or something, and there was another question about will it fit? And both of those things would require future study. And, um, I just wanted to point that out in case I was the only one that happened to notice that. And that's, uh, and I vote for any David Braun location. And I guess, I guess the other thing is, I wanna point out is, if you look at the numbers and you divide them between all of the numbers that voted for a David Braun location, and all of the number of people that voted for Howard Ward, that David Braun has the majority of votes.
To read the, uh, comments that have been submitted to her for this purpose.
Gloria Summy, eighteen six one ten, Carriage Court, Mayor and City Council, I voted for the Kids Course eighteen hundred and continue to support the forward progress with its placement. Unfortunately, I did not get the opportunity to vote on the location, but to support the majority vote on placement. I am saddened to hear the talk of canceling this project altogether. I feel it is important to continue to support our youth and encourage outdoor physical activity with age appropriate equipment. I hope the Parks Committee continues to be transparent in its future endeavors in support of our wonderful community and avoid political conflict. Please do not kill the playground equipment. Concerned resident, concerned parent and resident Gloria Summy. Lynn Osina, eighteen three eleven, Harroport. Dear Mayor and Council, I understand a small group of people are trying to cancel the already budgeted and paid-for Kid Course eighteen hundred playground after a vote on the location with the majority of votes for David Braun Park. It didn't, I did not even know there was a vote for the equipment, as I understand out of four thousand in Nassau Bay, only a small group of people were notified of the voting, and only two hundred and nineteen voted. I am furious the entirety of the community was not included in this. If I ever found out a member of the council selects who they're going to ask to vote on an important issue, I will immediately start a campaign to impeach them. This is truly underhanded. When you only receive two hundred and nineteen votes, you should not assume the vote opportunity has gotten where it should go. Two hundred and nineteen people do not speak for four thousand. Common sense tells you that. If I could vote, I would have said yes. I agree with City Council's purchase of the Kid Course eighteen hundred, and I would choose David Braun Park next to the basketball court. If we can supply not one but two dog parks, surely we can provide a place for our children to play. I would like to see the playground equipment in one place for children of all ages to enjoy. We need places for our kids to play. You have a duty not to kill the playground equipment. Rhonda K. Velders, eighteen three oh three, Blanchmont Lane. Dear Mayor and Council, it has come to my attention that some people are attempting to cancel the Kid Course eighteen hundred that was voted to be in David Braun Park because it is a duplicate of the stadium equipment. I would like to say that I strongly support City Council members' vote to keep both playgrounds, the stadium and the kid course, and David Braun Park, and it will explain why kids need more playground equipment. My husband and I moved into this neighborhood for the sweet amenities it has to offer. We purchased our beautiful home in the fall of two thousand fifteen, knowing we would have to have a place to take our future grandchildren. The parks were a major attraction in making the decision to find the right neighborhood, and Nassau Bay is/was the place we chose. As a professional in the mental health field, I work with children and adolescents as they try to navigate through life and this pandemic. We have all found ourselves to learn and manage through. In my practice, I continue to see fearful, isolated, and severe cases of depression and anxiety in our young people. As part of my treatment for my clients, I urge them to get outside to play and exercise whenever possible. Oftentimes, I take my young people to the park to provide a healthy interaction where they can play on the equipment. The new idea of the Kid Course eighteen hundred sounds like an amazing way to allow for our young people to get out and not only soak up the natural vitamin D from the sun, but to allow the brain to release serotonin and dopamine from engaging in healthy play. I see way too often clients who are playing on gaming systems for hours or isolate in their rooms because they are lonely and depressed. Nassau Bay has a great opportunity to help turn around the rise of mental health issues with our young people. This will allow, this will also provide the avenue for parents to get out and walk their children to the park, or participate with their pre-teens, teens at the park once the Kid Course eighteen hundred is installed. Throughout the pandemic, there has been a rise in suicides due to isolation and inactivity, and Kid Course eighteen hundred can actually help their mental well-being. I believe we can all work together to develop a strong presence in our neighborhood that says we love our children and teens by giving them as many opportunities as possible through achieving a sense of accomplishment when completing a challenging course that is both mental and physical. Please do not kill the Kid Course eighteen hundred ninja playground. The challenges of implementing it will be well worth it. We need to do all we can to provide healthy outlets to stabilize mental health in our young people. I voted for the area next to the basketball court and David Braun Park. Brian Brown, fourteen five four, Davon Lane. Happy New Year, Mr. Mayor, members of council, city staff, and fellow citizens of Nassau Bay. Over the past several council meetings, the big buzzword has been transparency. Folks have stood here at the podium and explained what it means, providing examples, and even called for it countless times. Tonight, the council has the golden opportunity to show transparency in action. We all vote on the renegotiated verbiage pertaining to the non-disclosure parts of the separation agreement with the former city manager, Jason Reynolds. While the vote can go either way, and this is why votes are held, anything short of unanimous vote to release the city and Jason from the gag order would show that transparency is just a buzzword and not a guiding principle of a governing body that has the best interests of its people in mind. As for the live streaming efforts, from the special meeting on December twenty-eighth, the Facebook Live feed was watched a hundred and twenty-four times with eighty-four unique viewers. Twelve of those viewers joined us for the live broadcast itself. The video was also uploaded to YouTube, where it received a hundred and thirty views in the first twenty-four hours, and currently sits at a hundred and fifty-five total views. With the first two citizen broadcasts covering special meetings during the holiday season, we expect the numbers to improve for a regularly scheduled meeting as word continues to spread. In addition to being posted on Facebook and Nextdoor, the link for the YouTube video is also sent out via several email lists to those who do not, do not have access to those services. I am dismayed that this council continues to take, continues to fail to take positive action on having the city broadcasts meetings, or at the very least, to make the city's recordings automatically available on the city's website the following day. Thankfully, a small group of concerned citizens is able to continue broadcasting these meetings on their own. I would like to extend a huge thanks to Sarah Plunk and Carol Caskey, who have been and will continue working hard to provide this service to our fellow residents. I would also like to remind this council, in terms of the Kid Course eighteen hundred, the decision that will be made here shortly, that we need in order to make sound financial decisions. Whatever decision is made, not everyone will be happy, and some will be incredibly upset. But I firmly believe that the only prudent course of action is to put a hold on this particular piece of equipment and work with the vendor to find proper replacements for the existing equipment in Swan Lagoon Park. Thank you all for your time, and let's have a productive twenty twenty-two. Elizabeth Blum, fourteen two seven, San Sebastian Lane. Dear City Council members, I cannot attend tonight's council meeting due to a conflict, but I did want to provide my comments about the Kid Course eighteen hundred. First of all, I applaud the efforts of Roscoe Lee and the Parks Committee to get input from the citizens of the city. I have been involved in several of the prior discussions on the playground, including the Kid Course eighteen hundred. Where I stand now is that I'm satisfied with the addition of the stadium equipment for the older kids in David Braun Park. Kid Course eighteen hundred would also be a great addition to the city, but I don't feel that it should be at David Braun Park, since it will be right next to the stadium equipment. I had thought it would be a good addition to Ward Park or Swan Lagoon, since the equipment at both of those parks is for younger kids. But it isn't something I feel strongly about, as long as the stadium equipment is added to the new playground structure in David Braun Park. My goal was to at least have one playground, playground area in the city for older elementary school children. Catherine Hathaway, eighteen six four seven, Cape Charles Lane. My name is Catherine Hathaway, and I reside in eighteen six four seven Cape Charles Lane. Now that Harris County has moved the threat level to severe, council members may choose to address why we're not testing our wastewater for COVID trac- traces to measure positivity rates. This is highly efficient and inexpensive method, would also provide a one-to-two week lead on infection rates. Particularly important should a more, uh, viral strain appear. Nearly two years into the pandemic, and with worldwide application of such testing, we are too preoccupied, quibbling about playground equipment against committee recommendations beyond any budget limitations and with no set plan. Congratulations, I have not seen such divisiveness in the twenty-two years that I have been a resident in Nassau Bay. Long time, longtime neighbors are at each other's throats, and not a single innovative solution has been proposed. Same with flooding issues. We are not even generous enough to include a single provision for handicapped children, but we have two ninja, ninja-type courses because we deserve it. If we weren't so embroiled with council dismissal of the previous city manager that has now morphed into the "not in my backyard playground equipment purchase and placement saga," and the ridiculous sundial tempest in a teacup, perhaps it would be time to examine how the forthcoming FEMA two-point-oh flood insurance rates will impact our community. It is not going to be pretty.
Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to speak? If not, the, uh, public hearing is now closed at, uh, eight oh six. Next on our agenda are council members' comments. Matt?
Uh, first of all, I just wanted to congratulate Officer Hughes for forty years of service. I think that's, uh, an incredible amount of dedication to the city that, uh, deserves being repeated. So, uh, congratulations to Officer Hughes. Uh, no further comments at this time, Eric.
Councilperson Mossman?
Councilman Pryor preempted me, that was going to be my first comment as well. We really, really appreciate our police department, all of our EMS, everyone who takes care of us, the fire department. Uh, it makes Nassau Bay a safe and wonderful place to live, and Officer Hughes exemplifies that. He's never too busy to help a citizen, and he certainly does deserve the, uh, what did we call it? The bus? What was it? The bus?
Bus guardian.
The bus guardian. Very important job, and we thank you very much.
Bryce?
Happy New Year, everyone. Um, this is, uh, January, and it's a dry January for me, so I call it the longest month of the year. So, um, wanted to, uh, address a couple of issues. Um, there is a concept out there, and it's called C-line, and that is a type of trolling or harassment that consists of pursuing people with persistent requests for evidence or repeated questions while maintaining a pretense of civility and sincerity. So I, um, have had some requests, and I am always available by, by phone. I've talked to, uh, a couple people in this room, and I am always happy to do so. What I, I don't tolerate is, um, disingenuous discourse, and I will continue not to tolerate that. Um, in the public hearing, um, we have had an ex-council member accuse us of a crime. So to that, I would say, if making difficult HR decisions is a crime, guilty is charged. And providing more playground equipment is illegal, guilty is charged. So I am very happy with what this council has done, and I, um, would like to express my desire to really talk about what our concerns are, work as a community. I, I love this community, I love this country, and I am really disheartened by those who have sought to educate. Um, if not everyone is going to agree with everything that's done up here, but I really firmly believe that we have a great community made up of great citizens. We're elected to make difficult decisions, and we have had, the budget alone, we've had about ten hours of open discussion regarding the budget. And I am happy with the increased city involvement. I'm disheartened by what I read online, and, um, really would like us to, to, to come together. Thank you.
My, my comment was still with Officer Hughes.
It's okay, go ahead.
Oh, I'm sorry, it looked like we were coming down here.
Well, I was going by council position number, but it's, it doesn't, it, uh, we'll go down here.
That works, then go that way. No, no. I, very quick, I just wanted to, you know, remind people that yesterday was actually, uh, law enforcement appreciation day, and that it coincides with Officer Hughes and the things along that line. Uh, that's just, that's just great, that's just good, good, good news for a good individual, and, uh, I hope people put out their blue light in order to be able to show their support for our, our men in blue.
Uh, I'd like to start off by saying Happy New Year, Nassau Bay. I hope that each of you had a wonderful holiday celebration, and perhaps you got to catch up with some family and friends that you haven't seen in a while. Um, I will echo my fellow council members' comments and congratulate Hank Hughes on his years of service. Um, we definitely are safer having him in our community, and, uh, and, and I, I thank him for, for sticking with us for so long. Um, it is the time of year again to start celebrations, and maybe Valentine's Day, you wanna honor a loved one with a Can Be brick or a Can Be Legacy bench? Those are available, and if you're interested- Those are available and if you're interested in those, please see me or another Can Be member in the room tonight, we'd be happy to help you out. We did a tremendous job on the reindeer fun run. I do have to give another shout out to Angela Braun for all her hard work on that. Hopefully plugging that in is an annual thing. We've got a lot to talk about at our next board meeting. We did raise a lot of funds for the city. We're still talking about how those funds will be used, but again, thanks to everybody who participated. It was a successful event. And again, I will invite my fellow council members and our mayor and any other elected officials in the room that are interested in joining us at the Harris County Mayors and Councils Association. As you guys all know, Nassau Bay is in secretary position for Harris County Mayors and Councils. It's a wonderful organization that helps us grow and network as a city and speak on a larger scale about regional issues that affect all of us. So it's good to have some support and networking when it comes to greater regional issues. So I hope you guys will come out.
Hank got me driving my golf cart on my door's rest with my tools facing the way I pushed. I learned at that point in time, you only drive a golf cart on a smooth surface. Then I raised the question, do golf carts have to have that triangle thing which means you have to fall through the vehicle? Maybe we'll decide what golf carts are really someday. All kidding aside, a couple of weeks ago, we got fried up here. One thing was live TV of meetings up here. I said, I was against that. Well, now I found out that this session you're conducting and all future sessions, we can respond to that. That was my concern, is always a one-way conversation. We were guilty as charged with no chance to say something back. So the basketball court across the street making noise, sounds, graphic noises and kids cursing, you're a police department that can be called under your noise orders. If you want to discuss the nuisances, from down to the end of the lake on a Saturday or Sunday, when the music from those boats is so loud your windows vibrate in your house and the gravity from the music is horrible. And no one should have to endure that. So I'm just as upset about nuisance as you folks are. The worst, when you had your problem with your house, I went to bat for you and we spent money to fix up your pipe. Sorry it's not what you want, but I'm coming back and saying we're not all bad all the That's what I have to say. Happy New Year, by the way.
Well, I'll start off by saying Happy New Year too. I would like to give a little status of the park equipment because I'm not certain everybody here realizes exactly what it is. And if I'm wrong, I'll get the Roscoe to straighten me out, but I believe that the stadium equipment is, has been, is about ready to be installed over the next two or three months. Isn't that correct? And obviously it's in Braun Park. The, I believe that the, the other equipment, the Kid Course 1800 has been purchased or at least is in the process of being purchased. Isn't that, is that correct?
Purchase order has been issued.
The purchase order has been issued for that, for that equipment. There is, there has been no vote or as far as I know, just a serious discussion on the council of where to put it. I think that obviously that's, that's coming up, but the decision is not made in any way of where, where to go. The, the voting was, was less than a clear guidance on where it should be. You can look at the voting that was done on the internet in multiple ways and I don't oppose to say which, which way is right. I'm not saying that, but it's, it's not an absolute, absolutely definitive direction for, for council. And so I think that the vote for where, where to put the, where to put the equipment will probably come up in the next month, I just guess. I don't know. The council, there's seven of us up here and we don't always all agree, so, but it, but it will come up in the, in the near future and we'll, we'll then know where, where it goes. So we certainly hear your, your comments and will take them into consideration. Thank you. Reports from staff members. Chief Cromies, our city manager, interim city manager is first.
Thank you, Mayor.
You have double time, but you've got to talk about the police department too.
I'll do both of them. Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I wanted to announce back in December at our holiday party, a number of our employees were honored with awards. These were, three of our employees every year receive awards through the city. They're recognized for their performance in their, in their jobs, but they're recognized by their peers. And these are, these are votes from employees all across the city for these positions. So first one is employee of the year and that's Tiffany Hatton. Tiffany's the police department office manager, so we congratulate her. Officer of the year is Jacob Arneson. Jacob has been with us for about a year and a half and he was voted as officer of the year. Supervisor of the year is Kirk Clausen. Kirk's a Parks crew leader with the Public Works Department, works for Paul Lopez. And obviously Hank's got plenty of recognition tonight, so we'll just skip over him. No, Hank's done a wonderful job for 40 years. One more thing, the, two more things, the city general election, first day for candidates to file for their application for a place on the general election ballot for city election is Wednesday, January 19th at 8:00 a.m. And the council packets are available online and in the city secretary's office with a sonder hand. Includes important information for deadlines and the necessary forms for those interested in running the general election. The last day to file for that election is Friday, February 18th at 5:00 p.m. More information is available on our website at nassaubay.com/election. The last thing is that if on our social media, there's a challenge out there, not our social media, but all social media, the Betty White Challenge. It's a challenge to remember actress Betty White, what would have been her 100th birthday on January 17th, to make a donation. She was a huge animal lover, to make a donation of $5 to your local rescue for animal shelter. So we just want to remind anyone who's interested in participating in that challenge, not forget the city of Nassau Bay Animal Shelter. So that's my interim city manager report, the police department report for December, our crime stats. The police department responded, 363 calls for service, 60 reports were taken, 163 traffic stops were made, 57 citations were issued, 106 written verbal warnings. There were 29 arrests, eight of those were for drug and alcohol, three persons, crimes were investigated and 21 property crimes there were arrested. We had patrol miles of 5,681 miles during the month of December. In November, DPS, Department of Public Safety conducted their criminal justice information system, that's our computer system that we use through Department of Public Safety and the FBI. There was an audit with Nassau Bay's security policies and procedures. After only two corrective actions that they found, which were considered, we had to update a couple of inter-agency agreements. We were found to be in compliance with the CJ's security policy requirements and we will be, we will be again audited in three years from now, so something we're proud of. And the last thing for the police department, completion of field training. We had two of our probationary officers, Officer Dusty Warpe and Officer CJ Kreider, both successfully completed their field training program and they're currently assigned to patrol shifts. So we have all of our patrol shifts full at this time. That's all I have, Mayor and Council.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, citizens. So last month, December, we ran 29 calls, 1,449 man-hours. And I will say just a couple of extra things. The year 2021 was the busiest year for calls the department's ever ran, 417. The next busiest year was 400 and that was during Harvey. So between that and the 20,000 plus man-hours last year was really busy for us. In December, we also graduated one firefighter from the academy and two EMTs from the academy, so that's a good thing. One thing on EMS, they ran about 1,015 calls last year, so very busy year. That's good. Any questions? Thank you.
Mr. Lopez will report on Public Works.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, citizens. We had a pretty busy December. We had eight major water leaks, about two leaks a week. Goes repairing the property, pulling out gas, gas lights and getting, getting everything repaired. The wastewater treatment sand filter project is about 60% complete. Friday, they did the last pour on the wall, so we're pretty happy about that. We jetted about 1,000 feet of sanitary sewer line to make sure the sanitary sewer lines are flowing pretty good. We were able to get 18 palm tree light conversions from the old standard lights to the LED bullet lights like you see on the palm trees at the boardwalk. They're now on point lookout. And so we're making our way through the city and try to switch all that out. They look a lot better than the old style that we were, we used to do. Street sweeping, we completed that, that was a two-day process. We were able to do all that to support Can Be with the Holiday Park, reindeer run, boat parade. And then on a good update, Swan Lagoon Park, I'm hoping to have that open by the end of the week. I spoke with fabricators probably about every other day and so we're hoping to get that done. And then also, I just got off the phone about 6 o'clock with Game Time and their installers will be finishing up, finishing up in Beaumont and should be at David Braun Park mid-week, next week. And so it's going to be about a month and a half, two months, so they'll be able to get all the old equipment out, demoed. It's already done. And so hopefully with the weather permit, we'll be able to get David Braun Park back to what it should be. Any other questions?
I'd like to recognize certainly Public Works again. We all appreciate them very much. It has been an incredibly busy time and their wonderful fearless leader has been out and we are thrilled to see him back, healthy, well, and taking charge of the shift again. Welcome back.
Thank you. I want to double that with Paul, you've actually done quite a bit being pretty hurt, health-wise and doing Zoom calls for, for a variety of different things. So just personally, thank you for, yeah.
You never slow down. You need to rest.
We have several housekeeping items on the consent agenda. Does any council person want to pull any one of those items off the consent agenda?
Mayor, we approve the consent agenda.
I second it.
All in favor, please raise your hand. Vote unanimously. We are now ready for a new business, item 10A. Would you please read the caption? Sandra?
Discussion and update on the status of the modification of a previously executed separation agreement between former city manager Jason Reynolds and the city of Nassau Bay in order to remove the gag rule.
I believe Councilman Johnson wants to speak on this.
Yes, so I wanted to give an update, not only to council. Usually I don't mean that, but that's, thank you. Because I made a commitment to, to the citizens and people here who called me and I appreciate those calls, people who I've talked with, make sure there's transparency. And I think we're at a very critical point to be able to make transparency happen. So I want to give a status on removing the gag rule and I also want to correct some from what I've been talking to people, some inaccuracies, because people are a little confused. The first comment that I want to make is that the confidential separation agreement is, is a mutual agreement between the former city manager and city council. Both parties currently restrict the publishing or release of the information by the other. Neither party can release information without the consent of the other. There are some that have stated and are under the impression that the city is unilaterally preventing the information from being published, which is, which is not the case. In the, the drive for transparency, there are two clauses in the agreement which impacts or restricts transparency. One known as clause 18 and it restricts the separation agreement document itself from being made public. The other, which is clause 11, restricts any comments made by any party concerning the separation, even if those comments are true. It's what I call the gag rule. All right? On December 28th, council authorized removal of both clauses to allow for transparency. Also on the 28th, the former city manager authorized by way of legal counsel the removal of clause 18, but not clause 11. An amendment to the agreement completely removing both clauses 18 and 11 was sent to the former city manager to allow the publication of the separation agreement and to allow the lifting of the gag rule. We have received from the former city manager a request for the city to pay for his legal fees before any further discussions or negotiations can occur to include removing clause 11. The city is not aware of any additional negotiations as the commitment by the parties was to just completely lift these restrictions to provide full transparency. We have not heard back since the amendment, the amendment was set. I think there may be an issue in regards to legal costs and I believe we'll be discussing this topic in executive session.
Correct.
But that's, that's the stage that we're at for, for providing transparency.
I hope I did all right, Council.
Yes, you did. All right, this is Honra, will you read the next caption for us, please?
Presentation, discussion and possible action on the proposed site location for the Kid Course 1800 playground equipment.
Who is going to speak on this?
I'll be speaking to that, Mayor.
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
First of all, there's obviously a lot of passion about the playground equipment and some controversy. So I think before we get into the actual discussion of the voting, and Mayor Waters actually started this a little bit, I think a little history on the whole process of our playground over the past year would be in order. In late 2020, the city released a request for bid for playground equipment at David Braun Park. I think it's very important for everybody to understand what the contents of that request for bid is. It was to provide two sets of equipment, one for ages two to five and another set for ages five to 12. The vendor would also remove all of the old playground equipment except for the climbing wall and the swing sets, which were still functional. They were to install the new equipment, they were to remove the old mulch and install new mulch. A very key factor is that all of that equipment needed to fit within the current footprint of the playground. Very critical because trying to expand the size-
Very critical because trying to expand the size of it would have included a significant cost. Beginning in 2021, the Parks Committee received a number of inputs from residents about the equipment they would like. As an example, we got an input about the Ninja-type course in Pearland. I looked it up on the Pearland website. It's a great course, $313,000, a little bit beyond the budget that we were told that we had. We also, during one of our parks meeting, received a petition, which was referenced earlier. Quite a number of kids signed up on that, asking for playground equipment of the Ninja type. During this period of time, I also received a lot of emails about going, residents going to various parks and identifying types of equipment that they would like. I went to every one of those parks, took pictures of it, and distributed those pictures to the Parks Committee. So we are not oblivious to the input from the residents. We did look at it, but let me continue. On the 30th of March, we received bids from eight vendors. Now, recognize that when we got the bids, we couldn't just ignore it and go to catalogs and say, okay, we'd rather have this. We had to review the bids as, as they presented them. Those bids ranged from $114,000 to $212,000. We were told that our budget was approximately $125,000, but we weren't limited to that. The Parks conducted a special meeting on the 5th of April. We just got the packages, some extracts from each of those packages four hours prior to our meeting. At the meeting, we looked at the things like the warranty associated with the bid, the variety of equipment, inclusion of shades. The Parks Committee was really supportive of providing shades, because we were told the kids in summertime had a difficult time playing on the playground. We also assessed the quality, durability, use of maintenance, and the vendor's credentials. Even in the short period of time we had, we finally decided that the Game Time bid was what we would recommend. They were the cheapest, their bid was about $114,000. Another factor was that Game Time was the vendor for the original equipment at David Braun Park, which mainly was attributed to putting in ourselves. Game Time also provided the equipment that is in Howard Ward Park and in Swanlagoon Park. One of the members of our Parks Committee is the department manager for the Parks and Recreation Department in Baytown. And he said that Baytown is buying exclusively from Game Time. So we felt like Game Time was a very reliable company. So, sorry, this is a bit long. Now, after we made that recommendation, I did release that to the public so that this was visible to everyone. At the 12th, 12th April council meeting, I was prepared to present our recommendations, but council said that, you know, we had not had enough time to look at it thoroughly. So they asked us to go back and spend more time at it, which is fine. So we did. During that time, I believe there was some meeting with some residents, because they raised concerns, they saw the equipment that we proposed and felt like it was not sufficient for older kids. Now, subsequent to that, at the 10 May council meeting, council did approve our recommendation for Game Time for the Forget-Not equipment, which is ages two to five, the Snappy Incline, which is for ages five to 12, for $114,000. But they also said you can have 25% more budget to look for additional equipment that would fit older kids. So we proceeded with that. The staff looked at this situation and looked at some modifications to perhaps allow some flexibility. What they decided was that they would go ahead and remove the climbing wall and swing set, which by the way, we got some negative comments. They were perfectly functional equipment, why did you remove it? The reason it was removed is to make more space, possibly for larger equipment. So with the removal of the climbing wall and the swing set, we also added a three-bay shaded swing set, which was indexed over to make room. Unfortunately, even with all of that action, KidCorps 1800 would not fit in the footprint of the current playground. A key factor, which is why we could not choose KidCorps 1800 at that time. The Parks Committee looked in the catalog. We had some latitude with this 25% budget to look at some additional equipment. And so looking back at some of the pictures I took from the parks that were recommended by some of the residents, we picked some equipment. The next morning, we, staff and I and Jason Renn met with the Game Time representative and showed them what we were looking at and what the residents were asking for, which is equipment for older kids. He looked at it and reconfirmed that KidCorps 1800 would not fit in the footprint. But he pulled out his catalog and he showed us this equipment called the stadium. And he said that this stadium is a brand-new piece of equipment. There was not an example in the near vicinity. But it, but it had quite a nice catalog, because it identified 10 features of this equipment. And you could see each of those pieces. So he thought that this might fit the bill in terms of equipment for older kids. There was a citizens committee hearing that was later that morning, or actually, you know, right after lunch. And this proposal was presented to them, that we add the stadium with an additional 25% or perhaps more. And let's see how that would work. And here's where there's some differences in opinions. My recollection and some of the other people that were involved, the recollection is that most of the people in the citizens committee felt like the stadium was a positive addition. It did provide more features than the two sets that we had previously recommended. It is in a very compact area, but the thought was, okay, let's purchase that and see how the kids would like it. And if it turns out not to be as viable or as useful as we thought, then we would consider additional purchase. So that was taken forward. And on the May 20th, I'm sorry, that was, on the May 21st, the May council authorized staff to submit a bid to Game Time for the stadium. But they also, at the same time, did say to develop a request for bid for installing KidCorps 1800 and other equipment in Swanlagoon Park. So there was a multiple piece there. On the 14th of June, council approved the Game Time bid of $69,748 to install the stadium in David Braun Park. So in, in fact, what we have is two purchase orders for David Braun Park. One, $125,197 for the two playground sets and the shaded swing set plus removal of additional equipment. And then $69,748 for the stadium, for a total purchase of about $195,000. So we have, with that transaction, we have four pieces of equipment in David Braun Park. And as Paul had noted, we hope to have that in the next month and a half. The unfortunate part is we thought we would have that equipment installed in the October timeframe. Unfortunately, like many other things, we got hit by the supply chain problem, and that was delayed. The removal of the equipment actually went off without a hitch in, starting on the 10th of December. Unfortunately, it went so fast that we've had an empty park for quite a while.
I believe it was August is when it was to arrive.
I'm sorry.
I believe it was August when it was supposed to arrive. We have that maybe.
Right, okay. So unfortunately, we have not, we do not have that stadium or any of the new playground equipment in David Braun Park at this time. And perhaps if we had it and kids got used or tried it and see how they liked it, perhaps all this discussion this evening would not be necessary. Now, along, as I mentioned earlier, at the same time they approved the purchase of the stadium, they also recommended approval, a purchase of KidCorps 1800 to be installed in Swanlagoon Park. And as was mentioned earlier, residents at Swanlagoon Park objected to that, particularly the residents whose houses butted to the park. Literally, there was no street separating those houses from the park. One of the complainants lived in the townhomes to the north of the park. And his comment was they have a very expensive wrought iron fence there. Kids were already clamoring on that fence and destroying the fence. The proposed layout from Game Time for KidCorps 1800 in Swanlagoon was adjacent to that fence, so obviously that didn't please them. So council did decide against that and withdrew that decision. But they still kept the, they changed the RFP to still purchase KidCorps 1800, but at a TBD location. Now, as, as a side comment, early in, it was mentioned earlier, there are many budget cycles. And at one of the early budget cycles, my recollection is that Jason had recommended that we, that he included a line item to replace the playground equipment in Swanlagoon Park. That equipment is 25 years old. And the proposal was to put in two sets of equipment, again, ages two to five and five to 12. Unfortunately, with the, not reported, just as, as the process went and the decision to purchase KidCorps 1800, that particular item went away. So that brings me, Sandra, can you put up my presentation?
I don't have it.
Oh, you don't have it? I'm sorry, I didn't bring it. Okay, so I'll have it winging.
Oh, the four slides?
Yeah.
Yes, I can.
That's in the package.
Yes.
So at this time, I'm going to what's, what we really wanted to talk about tonight, which is the voting results, which by the way, you know, went out quite early, so it's quite visible to everybody. Yeah, please, next slide, please. Okay, let me skip the, oh, back. Let me skip the first bullet there, because I've already talked about that. So at the 8th of November council meeting, council directed the Parks Committee to look at possible locations for KidCorps 1800 at David Braun Park. The following week, they directed us to also look at possible locations in Howard Ward Park. And with that, Mayor Pro Pym had worked and worked with Pastor Stone at St. Thomas and got agreement that citizens could use the parking lot at, at their church when they visit a playground, recognizing that there could be a concern about parking on the street. So then at our 17th of November Parks Meeting, we discussed five possible locations at David Braun Park and two possible locations in Howard Ward Park. Now, since the results have come out, people have gotten comments that we rigged the election because we had more sites selected in David Braun Park than we did in Howard Ward Park. Let me just say that Howard, David Braun Park is a large area. There were some simple rules that we followed. We obviously did not want to put a playground in the middle of the soccer field, baseball field. That was a simple solution. We did not want to put it out in, toward the creek where it had the heaviest amount of flooding. But there's lots of green areas there. So we looked at all of the possible green areas that sort of made sense. Now, if we had shut it down to a smaller number, we would probably have been accused of shortchanging and not picking several sites. So we erred on the side of all the possible locations. In terms of Howard Ward Park, it had its constraints. We have always held that we would not put anything in the area where we had played soccer or frisbee and so forth. And obviously, we would not take out the track. That provides a very limited area where we could possibly put that. So that's why we wound up with the two. Now, for each of those sites, we went through pros and cons. We did not just pick it randomly. For almost all the sites in David Braun Park, the obvious con was it floods. And equipment does not stand up well to being flooded. There's other areas that we picked, even though we know that they were used heavily with the special events committees, activities. Some of the green spaces heavily used for Easter egg hunts. In other areas, people just like to lay out on the grassy area. So we did do the pros and cons. We, for each of the seven sites, we rank ordered them, not selecting it, just rank ordered it. And then we decided that because we knew it was to be controversial, we put it up to a vote. Now, we've obviously been beaten up now about, well, you only got 219 votes. Well, we, we published it, the notification of the vote was on the city website. I put it out on Nextdoor, I sent it out to my distribution list. I think Kristin Edwards did the best she could. Kristin, could you cite where other areas?
Yes, we posted a link to the survey on Facebook one fourth times, as well as to the city's next location.
So I personally, other than that, I don't know what other choices we had. We couldn't go door-to-door. I guess you could go door-to-door to 4,000 residents and try to get them to vote, but we didn't take that option. Anyway, we, we decided to put it to a vote. The report was that we developed, for each of the locations was posted. The voting was opened on the 30th of November, ran through the 21st of December. Next slide, please. Now, I did want, on the next page, I did get some comments during the voting. And so I wanted to share it with you. And unfortunately, there was some backlash even on that. First of all, one comment was, well, you, you mentioned flood risk to the equipment in David Braun Park, so why don't you just fill and get rid of that risk? Well, unfortunately, the park is in the floodway. And so FEMA has very strict restrictions on what you can do fill-wise. Now, as an example, many of you may remember, but we dredged Lake Nassau a few years ago, and some of that field got put out in, in the field. I think it was raised about 18 inches out there, the old baseball field, soccer field area. Well, why could we do that? Well, it's a one-for-one balance. We took it out of the floodplain and put it in the floodplain. So from a FEMA standpoint, that's what they call a no-rise situation. We made no change in terms of the elevation of the waters in that area. So if we, if we wanted to fill, put it in a location that would not flood in David Braun Park, we could fill it, but we would have time to fill from a location within the same floodplain area. And it's not undoable, but I, you know, it's not something that the Parks Committee could recommend. And then the fill itself can be quite expensive. Obviously, as, as many heard this evening, there were many residents across from the park that were concerned about its proximity to their homes. That's fine, and I appreciate those inputs. There was a comment made about absence of restrooms that was brought up again this evening. We kicked around the issue of restrooms in our Parks Committee, and it went both ways. Some people thought, remember, we played soccer there and no one ever needed to go to a restroom? Well, I don't know. Anyway, the, the issue of installing restrooms in the park is not a trivial matter, and it's not something that the Parks Committee could decide. The next item was that a number of voters questioned the need for KidCorps 1800, especially since this location is controversial. Now, and, and this comes up in the vote that in, let me see. Sorry, it's been a while since I looked at this. Yeah, it turns out that during the voting process, five people out of the 219 added a comment to their vote that said they'll vote for a location, but they would prefer not to, not to purchase the equipment at all. Now, this was belied by, by some of the folks here. It was belied by one of the council members that said that that proves that 98% of the people that voted.
It was me.
Yes, that was a misuse of the data. Because since then, on social media, there's, there's a lot of people here that said, don't cancel the vote, I mean, don't cancel the purchase of 1800. But an equal number are saying, if they had the opportunity, if on the ballot there was a choice of not purchasing KidCorps 1800 or asking for a refund, they would have voted that way. That's just a comment I'll, I'll say. And the results page is next. And I will not try to interpret any of the votes. I will not try to. I will not try to defend whether 219 is an appropriate number for 4,000 residents or not. And I, from a Parks Committee standpoint, we'll just leave it to council to decide on what to do with these votes. I will, on the bottom line, one of the residents mentioned that there were comments made about any choice in Howard Ward Park. And it is true, that was one of the pros and cons that we put in there. Howard Ward Park has some unique characteristics. First of all, there's a property line between St. Thomas and the city's property. And I think we should abide by the seven foot setback from that. At least we should do that. Also, there's a 42 inch line, storm sword line that runs somewhat parallel to that property line. And from a public works standpoint, you obviously don't want to put the equipment on top of that line. And there's a 72 inch line, six feet, you can literally walk there. As a matter of fact, when they were installing, it was fun to kind of walk through that line, running diagonally through the park. So we would also have to avoid putting any equipment over there. So it is just a true statement that if there was a choice to fit in Howard Ward Park, we should get a survey and make sure the property, where the property line is, that's not a super big deal. And then also, it should not be a difficult process to find where the lines are. So at this point, I think the Parks Committee has fulfilled our obligation in terms of addressing the possible locations. We put it to the vote and we leave it to council for your wise decision.
And Roscoe, thank you. I know you have to navigate some waters there. We appreciate your efforts and that's what the HOMP is about, so.
Thank you. One more question, Roscoe, is council to make a decision based on votes? I don't think we want to make a decision based on, are you implying that?
I'm sorry, I couldn't, I couldn't hear you.
Are you, are you implying that we're going to make a decision based on the vote count that you should have?
I don't have any other vote count. I don't have any other data. No, I'm sorry. Yeah, I mean, I, I feel for you, Roscoe, here because it's, from the data, it's almost like there's so many options, it's, it creates a, a kind of a bit of a confusion with the numbers. And it's, it's, it's hard to see exactly the voice of the, of the community. The one thing again, which I had meant to say the other night, is just go by majorities. But it's, it's, it's just not clear from here. And I, I think it's going to just take some stepping up to decide exactly where we should put it.
I appreciate all you, I don't want to listen.
Yep.
It's been a fun task. It'll wear you down. It's like, I gained dredging done.
Mayor and Council had some, Chief Proppi asked, asked me, I think last week, to get some questions that he was being asked and so.
They have copies of that.
Oh, you have copies of it?
Yeah, I brought, I brought tonight and gave to the board.
Okay, okay. I didn't know if I needed to answer any questions or anything on that. I had some additional information that I just.
Okay, people share that.
Yeah, it's the, as far as a warranty, we can't purchase additional warranty. We put it at David Braun Park, but it's a standard warranty. But the old equipment that was there from, I think, 89 maybe, was in good shape. Well, started to rust when we pulled it out. And as far as the, the equipment cost being sent back, if we decided to cancel that, it's 25% of it, and then also the delivery charge after it's delivered. And then the, let me see, there's one other thing. As far as the salt water, it's just, if it happens, they'll, they'll look at it. It's just a standard warranty, but we can't, we can't get no other warranty.
Paul, can you comment? You know, people talk about the flooding there. Is the tennis courts, pickleball courts, are the dog parks, are the basketball courts, what is not in the flood plain?
We, we had six feet of water. And that's.
Just main recreational facility. What is not in the flood plain?
I don't think any, Don, I have to. Mistaken.
Everything's in the floodway. And what we did years ago, when we put the dam with the spillway to keep the spill, the creek in rushing, bringing the silt and then flowing down from Beirut, we built that to elevation six feet. This guy followed me, he's mayor. And we made six foot the elevation all around Lake Nassau. If you down the street coming into the park, there's a curb on your right hand side. Nassau's elevation is six foot. At the end of every cul-de-sac, street on, on number Beirut, we built up to six foot. If you do it over six foot, there aren't enough pumps in the road so it's just coming in.
Just, just to add that, that's because of.
The whole park is tropical storm out. It's going to be wet, elevation six. Everything is in the flood.
And then the last comment I had was that I spoke with, with Game Town multiple times every, every week. They said that they're not going to charge us for storage. They don't see that for about the first six months. They said, you know, maybe after six, eight months, maybe even a year, because they're so far behind that maybe they'll start talking about storage. But as far as storage, they're not going to charge us anything. They can just lay in their yards, about five acres. I said, it'll probably fit, if we wanted to store here, you know, 40 foot container, maybe 12 on 40. But they said, don't worry about that for about the next six months.
So Paul, this is a memory question. When we were discussing the main footprint equipment, now the 1800, at that time, when were we expecting delivery?
Oh, delivery for?
The original set.
The, the original set was back. We're going to try to have it by, I think, October for, for Halloween. I think it's still.
It installed, I thought.
Yes, sir.
Delivered in August.
Yeah.
So it, it hasn't been delivered as of January 10th, correct?
No, sir.
So there's been a bit of a delay.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
One other thing is, from, from the actual vet or the letting of the PO, were there any price increase announcements by Game Town in regards to if we're going to look at it? What, you know, what were those?
Yes, there was going to be, when I submitted, actually after, the, the day after, I submitted the, the PO and we got it ordered or else we were going to pay, I think it was an extra 20%. And I think that was the rush to try to get the, get it ordered.
So if I understand that correctly, had we delayed the ordering, we would have had to have paid an additional 20%?
I think it was up 23%, yes, sir. Yes, sir. The exact same equipment, yes.
Okay.
And then, Paul, real quick, the, the survey that needs to be done to identify the property line and then also the, the storm drains, I think that's going to be a critical action if we're going to make any decision about placement. When do you think we'll be able to have that data to be able to incorporate it into the potential options for where this equipment could go?
I'd say we should be able to get it in a couple of weeks. I'll get with the engineer tomorrow and then if we have to move on pretty quick. I don't think it's going to be that long.
Okay.
We can probably find out pretty quick.
Yeah, I think that's going to be critical information to have in hand.
Anything else? Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, can I make a comment? May I make a comment?
Yes.
All right, so I wanted to provide a brief history as alluding to, you know, I, I love Nassau Bay and some of the history is, is pretty fascinating. So, and if I get some of the details wrong, forgive me, I moved here in 2009, but I've been around a lot of people, I've been here for longer. So back in the 60s and 70s, David Braun Park had kind of disparate playground equipment, swings here, and it wasn't in a tight spot. And at, you know, at the time, you had Nassau Bay Village with, with a tall sign with the apartment store. So, so things were different then. My understanding is, and again, wasn't here, in the 90s, there was a fantastic effort done by the volunteers to provide new equipment. It was fundraising. I believe there's some people in this room that are up on the diocese and in this audience who drove that effort. And it was a great volunteer effort. It's one of the examples of why I love the city so much. In fact, there might be someone in this room who climbed to the aforementioned tall sign to advertise that fundraising effort, putting his life at risk perhaps. Not going to name any names. So unfortunately, as, as, as time does, in about 2014, it was clear that, that, that equipment had run its, run its course. And we were in a, in a different, different financial spot at that time. And, and I, I do not say this statement malign, the, the council or the, the city manager at the time, but we, we got a, a, a different piece. It was, we paid for what we got. We got it cheaply so the kids could play. And I think it was a, the fast worst case scenario that we could do to have, to have new equipment there. And it's not surprising to me that we're not very many years later and we're thinking about replacing that equipment again. And we did so in the 2020, 2021 budget, so last year's budget. At, at that time, delivery August, installed by October, you know, that clearly hasn't been done yet. And that, that's due to the, the supply chain and, you know, if anything goes wrong, blame COVID. Right, so. And I, I really, I think there was a, a big effort, especially in my part, to try to go back to the way it was done in the 90s, having a lot more input from the citizens as opposed to just kind of trying to Band-Aid that situation. I'm a firm believer that if you invest into these amenities in Nassau Bay, that it'll increase home value. More importantly, our kids will have a place to play. It'll be something that I, I think we'll, we'll all be proud of. And I'm, I'm a bit baffled by the, the controversy. For clarification, this playground equipment was budgeted. And I can, I'll keep this brief, at the May 21st meeting that we had, unfortunately, Sandra was not there, so the recording, I think, was via cell phone. So it was, there's been some, some different memories from that meeting. But we directed that the city manager get a PO for the Kid Course 1800. There was discussion at that meeting of, you know, why do we now if we don't have a location? As we just asked the Public Works Director, the impetus for that was because we were going to face a, you know, 20% price increase. So for those keeping score, you know, CPI is about 2% a year. So that would be 10 years of inflation if we waited a month. So there's been some question as to, hey, was this a good decision to rush, quote, rush into it? To that, I led the charge to say, let's do it now so you can get, get the break. I stand by that. I, I understand there's, there's mixed emotion of, okay, if you don't have the exact spot picked as of yet, why order it? The answer to that is to clear a price increase. So that's the inflation piece. And it's worth noting that at that meeting, the, obtaining the PO was unanimous vote. At the budget meeting in August, when this item came up in the CIP issue, this, these funds were there. And, and I'm speaking of it from memory, it's about 20,000 to fill, 20,000 to install. And I believe the equipment is about 60,000. So, and then there were some, some gaps in there for overages. So I think we're budgeting about 110,000 for the additional equipment. We have a tennis court that I think is great. I see people playing there all the time. We have a pickleball court, which I've never played in my life. I understand a lot of people like it. I think it's wonderful. I don't, I don't know if there's other pickleball courts around. We have a great dog park. People from our city and other cities come frequently. It's wonderful. It's worth noting that there are two areas for the dog parks. One for small dogs, one for big dogs. So this brings us to the overlapping nature of the stadium versus the Kid 1800. The stadium piece is a very condensed piece. It's going to be an original footprint that is contemplated for children in the, the two to five range. I'm, I'm sorry, Roscoe, I didn't mean to interrupt you. You've had your chance. I appreciate mine, thank you. That was. So that leads us to, I believe it's absolutely pertinent, as evidenced by comments tonight, that we have two places for our children to play, one for younger people and one for older people. Now, I agree that the ages overlap. We can, you know, draw up Venn diagrams or what have you. But the important piece is that there's a different pod for older people to play separate from younger people. I think that's important. To me, that's premonetization, obvious. But I understand that there's some people that still do not want the Kid Course 1800. And, you know, I, I respect your opinion a lot. This has been one of the most heated issues since I've been up here for about nine years. And I don't expect there to be consensus on this. When, in, before the May 10th meeting, I had a meeting with Jason, I got a catalog this big. And what I'll say to you is, when I paint a house and my wife brings home those swatches, my eyes immediately glaze over. It was very, all the different options, I don't know what's, what's best. I left it, I think the Parks Committee has done a great job. I think the Citizens Committee has done a great job. We picked something that is old and new. So at the, I believe it was the November, October timeframe, I believe it was a 4-3 vote to go ahead with Kid Course 1800, location unknown. Now we have the PO and I, I stand by the PO. I'm, I'm ready to pull the trigger on, on where it goes. And I think it's going to be something that the city really enjoys and loves. And I won't be on council when it's installed. It'll probably take six months or if it gets here, another two to three months to install. I'm going to be a citizen at that point and I'm, I'm really looking forward to, to using it. So those are my comments and I appreciate your attention.
We've mostly beaten this issue today. And it's, I, I'd like to, to bring it to a conclusion tonight, at least a, a quasi conclusion. I'd like to decide whether we're going to put it in Howard Ward Park or David Braun Park. And maybe, and if we can decide that, and if, if there's, if, if the council is ready, we could decide what location in, in.
Can I take a shot at that?
I would, I would like a motion to, to, to resolve this issue.
Let me, let me say this before I start, because this has been by far the most my phone has rung. It was even more than the apartments now. And from, from that standpoint, there's been a whole lot of feedback. And I actually think we have way too many alternatives, which is clouding what needs to be done. And in my mind, there's been two things that have reverberated, at least for me personally, is that the residents around Swan Lagoon spoke about noise, nuisance, things like that, which was very clear. Any property that was around that park is one that, you know, had, had concerns about, about the noise. Equally so with Howard. Equally so with Howard Ward Park. The residents who have property along that line are ones that have almost unanimously, and things here have said that it is, it is one that they, that they, one, support park equipment, but just not in Howard Ward Park because of the frontline nature of the, of other homes relative to the park. So I haven't, I don't know where this will go, but I'll give you the motion because I actually believe somebody challenged us to take some actions and take responsibility. And I personally don't want to be against the parents who have pushed me to be able to make sure playground equipment's here. So I make, I move that we put in the kid course eighteen-hundred in David Braun Park. I would be included, I would like to see it in option number five, which was the highest ranked one.
I second that motion.
The motion is to put the equipment in David Braun Park.
Option number five.
And option number five. Okay, and there's a second for that motion. Is there further discussion? All in favor, raise your hand.
Thank you.
That was a tough one to resolve there. I think we're down to the first reading of ordinances. Is that right?
Yes.
Would you please read the caption for item eleven A?
Yes. Consider and take action on an ordinance amending the fiscal year two thousand twenty-two budget. First and only reading.
Good evening. I don't know what's going on with the football game, but this is the. The budget amendment you saw in February, or in February, oh, tomorrow, in December, nothing's changed off of it. You've essentially got ninety-one thousand dollars in general fund, fifty thousand dollars in water sewer fund, eighty-eight thousand dollars in tourism fund, and seventy-six thousand in special revenue fund related to expenses that have increased or things have occurred that have allowed us to, or that have resulted in additional spending like the contract that was approved in December. And so that is what is included in here and I'm happy to answer any questions y'all may have.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
First of all, I want to thank Chila and again the finance department for offering us such clear explanations of every item that is involved in amending the F Y two thousand twenty-two budget. So therefore, I would like to make a motion to approve ordinance two thousand twenty-two dash eight-one-nine amending the fiscal year two thousand twenty-two budget. First reading only.
And I would second with a point of inquiry. But I do second.
Are there further questions?
I have a point of inquiry. Yes, I have a question. So I think, thank you, Chila, and sorry for the delay in entertaining my questions. Much appreciated. I do, Mayor, have, though I think this is fine, I do have concern with city policy as it relates to authorizing increases to certain individuals. I would like there to be, perhaps at the next workshop, if we can, have a discussion on what council can and can't do in terms of certain pay increases. And Sandra, can you add that, please, for a future? Yes. I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
I have a question. These all seem to be payroll issues.
So, no, not everything on here is payroll related. You have items related to public works, maintenance, contingency contract services. You have maintenance facilities and you have the contract with Space Center Houston in addition to the elevation grant expenses that were delayed over the fiscal year. But we are adjusting salaries, FICA, and pension in all three funds. Yes.
Does it go with the pay increases or?
No, so all of these are related to the contractual severance payout or city manager rentals. And I thought I made that clear in the notes, but.
Are there further questions? If not, I'll call for the vote. I believe we have a motion to. Second already. Call for the vote. Raise your hand if you're in favor.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chila. Sandra, would you read the caption for, I guess it's eleven B?
Yes, sir. Consider and take action on an ordinance calling the May seventh, two thousand twenty-two city officers' election for the purpose of electing a mayor and three council members positions two, four, and six, first of two readings. And I will just quickly state that I presented to council in November regarding, at the November workshop, about the various options for the election. And this ordinance calls the election to host with Harris County. They will conduct our election for us. And there's other details in the ordinance regarding the early voting dates and other certain things related to, go ahead.
Do you have those early voting dates?
Yes, actually, early voting begins April twenty-fifth and runs through May third. And I will be updating our city website once I have those actual locations.
Is there a second? Second. Any more discussion? If not, I'll ask you to call for the vote and raise your hands if you're in favor. unanimous. Thank you. Okay. Now we're ready for executive session. So we'll ask the, okay. Executive session is authorized by Texas Government Code, Chapter five-five-one, open meetings, subchapter D, exceptions to requirement that meetings be open. All right, we're resuming open session. Time is now nine forty-eight. And we're going to sit here and take action on the modification of the previously executed separation agreement between Jason Reynolds and the city in Nassau Bay to allow public discourse and access to the agreement. Is there a motion?
Yes, I have a motion. I move that we authorize the mayor to sign a amendment basically eliminating section eighteen from the separation agreement to be sent to Jason and his council, as well as continued effort to negotiate with Jason and his lawyer to eliminate clause eleven, which is the gag. Second.
Is there a second? I don't think we have any more discussion left in us. That's vote. All in favor, raise your hand. And I'm no.
Mayor, for clarification, what does that, what does that allow or not allow staff to do?
Right now, I think you know what we do. We will make it available with documents itself that we have injected to the Attorney General because they're without a recognition to be in there. There's still language that says there'll be another spirit. And that's mainly like it's for our staff connection.
So there's still a gag rule, but we can make this public.
The contract itself.
So we've got to get Jason to sign the amendment. That's correct.
So as of tomorrow morning, staff has nothing different to.
Correct. We'll wait till Jason signs it.
I'll hear from you.
Yes. Okay, just clarifying.
Again, it's a mutually restrictive document. We can make an amendment, but Jason has to execute it in order for it to be a valid release.
No, I understand where we're going. I just want a clarification because tomorrow morning, Simon's going to be getting requests.
Well, and he and his attorney, both have said in writing that they would do this limited thing, and that's to make the contract available.
But just to be clear, he cannot relinquish the separation agreement until Jason signs the amendment.
That's correct.
Okay.
Just to be clear.
That's what I wanted to.
They went through with it by the Attorney General that we're drawing that because it's.
All right, thank you.
I'll entertain. Who's your adjourn?
Second.
All in favor, raise your hand. Your adjourn.
There we go.